And welcome to the June 27, 2022 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format where as our state and community continue to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And thank you again for joining us. And with that, I call the meeting to order and I will turn it over to the city manager to introduce. Or actually, no, I will turn it over. Correct. I will turn it over to the police auditor, interim police auditor.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I am interim police auditor Leah Pitcher. I've been a frequent person here lately. So hi, it's nice to see you all again. I have with me tonight Carolyn Williams. It's the Chair of the Civilian Review Board, so she'll be presenting their report at that part. And I have Lindsay Foltz from our office and Rob Eller are my new associate auditors. They are amazing. And Beatrice is also amazing. And she is here online also if you have questions about the outreach portion.
Leah, you might want to just tip your mic up. There you go.
Okay. I may have been avoiding it. So. So I try to make sure my slides are going at the same rate as my mouth. As, as I talked about when I was here a couple of weeks ago, or I guess a month ago, the Auditor's Office was created by Charter Amendment, Section 15A, to provide inaccessible, safe, impartial, and responsive intake system for complaints against Eugene Police Employees. Also to ensure accountability, fairness, transparency, and trust in the complaint system through the intake classification, auditing, and adjudication process. We also support the Civilian Review Board, which monitors our work and the work of Internal Affairs, reviews complaint cases, and provides policy recommendations to Police Department and the Police Commission and an advisory group to you. So going over just quickly, the city's organizational chart, we are independent of the rest of city government. So I'm the little box way out on the right. But so we, yeah, so we are not involved in all of the things that Sarah takes care of for the city. Thank you, Sarah. And we are independent of the Police Department. We do not report to the Police Department. We do work with them and we do oversee their work. The main functions of our office are complaint intake. We are the sole intake point for all complaints against Eugene Police Department employees, internal employees, the sole external complaint intake spot, which is to say that community complaints all need to come through our office. Internal city complaints can go through Internal Affairs or through our office. We classify all the complaints. That is our sole authority to classify complaints. Monitor investigations, make recommended adjudications to the chief. We would make recommendations around policy and training. We report back to the community as we are doing here and support the Civilian Review Board in their case review functions. So down the nitty gritty, last year, we received 339 complaints, which as you can see is a decrease from the last we've added. I'm going to call it a pandemic decrease. But 50 of those were dismissed. So it ended up being 289 complaints that were investigated by our office. Those dismissals occur for reasons that are set out in code. Typically, they are outside the jurisdiction of our office. So that is to say Springfield Police Officers, University of Oregon Police Officers, or city employees that are not EPD employees. They could be not timely. The city code requires that complaints of minor misconduct be received within 60 days of the incident. The code also requires that complaints of major misconduct be received within six months without good cause. There's a good cause caveat on both of those. Could be that the employee was not identifiable. That's pretty rare. We are able to typically figure out who was involved. And then the other one is if there's an alternate remedy available. So that is to say, if someone gets a traffic ticket, for instance, and they think it was without merit, the appropriate venue for that complaint is the courts. It's not our office. We are there for, if the officer was discourteous, or if there was something weird about the stop, not so much the merits of the stop. This is our flowchart. It scares people sometimes. We did try to keep it simple. So typically, our complaints are classified into those minor misconduct ones, or service complaints, or policy complaints. Inquiries are also sort of a lower level classification. Those would all go to an EPD supervisor for follow-up and investigation. They write a memo. We review that memo. We see if it requires any additional follow-up. And if it doesn't, then it's closed. In that nutshell, the incident reviews are sort of a lower, a middle-level classification. We can put things there while we find out more. Often, those can be reclassified either up or down. So up to an allegation of misconduct or down to a service complaint, depending on what they find. Those are investigated by Internal Affairs and we monitor that investigation very closely. We collaborate with them to ensure that proper investigative steps are being taken. We also work very closely with them with allegations of misconduct. Those are our most serious administrative investigations. So those are allegations that a policy violation occurred. So these would be your excessive force, failing to investigate things that are sort of, yeah, the more serious ones. We'll come back to that. So we work closely with IA to ensure that those are, those investigations are thorough, fair, and complete. We participate in witness interviews and in interviews with employees. And we review that completed investigative file to ensure that it is fair, does not show bias, and takes every necessary investigative step. At that point, we make a recommended adjudication to the chief. So does the EPD chain of command. And the chief has final adjudication authority. Allegations of criminal conduct take a different route because they are alleging criminal behavior on the part of a police officer. And we can talk more about those as they come up. But essentially, those criminal investigations are conducted by typically a different police agency. We're kept apprised of how those are going. They are reviewed by a district attorney to see if they're appropriate for prosecution or not. And then typically, an administrative investigation would follow. If I'm talking too fast, wave at me. Okay. So those are those classification types. And then Lindsay did this amazing graph where she looked at not just how many complaints we received, but how many specific allegations were included in each of those. So as you can see, the actual number of allegations investigated last year was higher than any previous year. We had a couple of sort of outlier investigations that included, I think one had 34 specific allegations of misconduct. That included interviews with dozens of employees. We've had, we had some big projects last year. So as you can see, we were kept very busy. I'll talk more about that. Specific allegations of misconduct, largely it was conduct. So that's, you might have heard it in TV shows as like unbecoming conduct. So that would include not maintaining a respectful work environment. That's sort of the main one. And then there's unsatisfactory performance, truthfulness, use of force, judgment. Were our most common last year. So disposition on those allegations of misconduct, as you can see, we had over 60 specific allegations that were sustained. We do still have a fair number open from last year. As some of you know, our staffing in our office was quite low last year. It was also quite low in Internal Affairs. We only had one Internal Affairs Sergeant for a portion of the year last year. So we're getting those worked through, but there is a bit of a backlog in some cases that are still open right now. These are, sorry, outcomes. So these are criminal conduct, allegations of criminal conduct. Sorry. So those included, as you can see, included seven specific allegations of adherence to laws. It's not, not following the law. It also included conduct allegations, integrity allegations. And then the disposition for these, this does not mean that seven employees resigned during the investigation. It means seven of those allegations were tied to an employee who resigned during the investigation. So I hope that makes sense. That is always, Mark and I always had struggles with how to probably show this to folks. So as you can see, again, some of those are still open. So discipline. These, so Lindsay did a really good job. Thanks. Sorry. On this one, you can see at the very end, there's, there were 40 specific allegations tied to an employee termination, but that was one employee. So I hope, I hope that kind of makes sense in there. You had eight employees who had documented counseling. And you can see they go from least common to lowest. Does that make sense? Kind of? No. Matt says no. I'll work on that. Okay. So what that means is of the hundred and some specific allegations that we investigated and closed, there were almost 40 tied to one employee where the result of that was that the employee resigned during the investigation. Does that, or termination? Sorry. Thank you. Does that make sense? Thank you. Please do ask questions, or at least do the, thank you. Okay. So our, our office, it was a big year last year. It was on, it was, it was really interesting to sit down and really think about what we went through last year. So we had staffing changes. We had the longtime auditor and my dear boss retired in February. And that was a big change that we didn't know was coming. But then we had a very long recruitment and hiring process. And we also had the wonderful experience of having another, one of our employees was out on family leave. So at one point, for several months last year, it was me and Vicky. So Vicky is not on our panelists tonight, but I know she's watching and I cannot thank her enough for keeping me going and for keeping us going during that time. It was, it was, it was thin. So at the end of the year, things started to look up. We had a successful hiring process. We've got Lindsay and Rob. Beatrice is back. Her baby's great. So we're, we're on a good step. We supported the Civilian Review Board through, I think we had 10 meetings last year. Was, and they decided in the middle of the year to start reviewing more than one case at every meeting. So that was also a lot of work and I'm so proud of you all for taking that on and Vicky for doing it. Then we also had, one of our areas of focus was the Ad-Hoc Committee on Police Policy. I worked with Jeremy to help provide training materials for, for that group, for that committee. I would go to those meetings and answer questions if they had them. And that includes the subcommittee meetings as well. So that ended up being a significant time commitment for me. It's also an ongoing time commitment as we work through those recommendations. And as you know, worked with Sarah and Judge Gill on the sorting team, or on the trio, we called it the trio at the end. And then also working on the sorting team to sort out how to work through those recommendations. We continued our work in community outreach, which was also interesting during the pandemic. One of our changes that we worked on was the, some of the feedback we received was around lack of accessibility in our system.
I'm sorry. I apologize. We're, we're distracted. Oh, so Greg, Greg, go ahead. If you would just take this seat because there's a microphone setup for you. I apologize. All right. We are all distracted because we haven't seen Greg in person at a council meeting.
This is great.
In months. Very exciting. Welcome.
It's good to see you.
Well, it's not really me. It's it's a hologram.
It's very convincing.
Technology.
Okay. So maybe you could rewind and go back a few sentences.
Of course. I have to say, I really liked the quick switch out of the names. That was okay. So I was, I think it was outreach. Thank you. Talking about our community outreach efforts last year, that was a bit of a struggle during COVID. But Beatrice was able to do a lot of translation work for various groups in the community and keep the word out about our office. And she can, she wrote a lot more about it in the report and can answer some of those questions. We also had heard feedback about the accessibility of our system. We still mail a lot of letters to folks who don't necessarily have mailboxes. And so one of the things I started working on last year was creating a community portal on our website where people can sort of like a building permit system where you can put your complaint in, you can check on the status of it. We can put your letters in there. You can submit video and photo through there. So we started working with ISD to identify vendors who could help us with that. And we actually just are finishing working up with purchasing an ISD this month. So that's been a big project, but we're really looking forward to implementation soon. And then I continue to do trainings. I did, I I appeared at a Billings, Montana Day of Empathy. That was really interesting. It was virtual. I could do all of these things, right? But we continued, you know, the things that Mark and I would do throughout the years where people had questions about our system. How do we get it set up? How do we have the access that we have? So a lot of those just phone calls and presentations to different folks about how our office works, how we came to be. And those are detailed in the report. Looking towards our goals for next year, we want to continue our work around accessibility. The, the community portal on the website, I think is a really good start. I'm going to jump around a little bit. One thing we are also looking at is relocating our office. We have outgrown our current space and it coincides with the end of our lease. So we've been looking around with the help of facilities and identified a space that is welcoming. And I think we can have our CRB meetings in there. And so I'm looking forward to inviting you all there when we finalize that. We'll see. We're also continuing our work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I was able to secure funding for a DEI officer for our office. The first thing I'd like to do is obtain a sort of DEI audit or analysis of our complaint system and see what our gaps are and see what those recommendations are. I know that Chief Skinner is also working on trying to figure out a DEI position in the department. So I'm working with him to ensure that we don't have redundancies, that we have a collaborative working relationship between those folks. Continuing to work on our core competencies, intake classification, investigation, adjudications. Those are, you know, the everyday work that we just try to get through. And Lindsay and Rob have picked that up very quickly. And I've been helping a lot with that. Beatrice is looking forward to bringing back our public safety forums next year for our outreach. And then sort of the three areas that I'm working on, trying to focus around are improving our deadly force investigations, the administrative side of it, that occurs after that interagency team investigation. Sorry. Continuing to work on an early intervention system. We've been working with EPD to try to figure out the best way to get support for employees who need it, to identify the employees who might need the support and offer it in a way that they're going to receive it and take that on. And it's going to be beneficial. And then, as I said, working through the recommendations from the ad hoc committee and reporting back to you all again in the fall. I'll be back. So that is the end of my presentation. Quickly, I wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to lead this office for the last year. It has been a lot of work, but I'm really grateful. And for those of you who I met with a lot last year, it's, it's been really fun to try to think of the ways that we can grow and evolve our office. So I just appreciate the opportunity. And then I also really need to thank our Auditor's Office staff for getting me through it. And, and all the other people on this list, including our CRB members. So Carolyn is here from the CRB to talk about the CRB report. Would you all like us to shoot right through to that and then do questions? Or how would you like to do that?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. Just okay, carry through and then we'll be able to ask questions of both.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm Carolyn Williams. I've been on the CRB for five years, I think. And I've been the chair for just this, one or two. I don't know. I was like three. Well, yeah, it's been a while.
It's been years.
I was co-chair with Lindsay when she was chair. Anyway. I appreciate the board and I appreciate the opportunity to be on the board. And I appreciate that Eugene has it and this part of this is them. Are we on that slide?
We're on this slide. Yeah.
So the main purpose of the board, I think, is to, to provide trust and confidence through transparency of the system. So people can come to our meetings and see what we're talking about. If I could change one thing about the board, it would be more public involvement. I would love more people to, to know about our meetings and to, to attend them, to become part of the process. I think that would be a great thing. We have some people who come every week. And we have some cases where we have a lot of people, but it would be great to have a lot of people at all the cases. Go ahead. We do have seven members and they are appointed by you all. So thank you for doing that. One thing that I've appreciated about the seven members, as they have changed over my five years, is that we all get along really well. And that isn't to say we always agree. We certainly do not agree. But there's something really unique about this board in that we can disagree in a respectful way. And I, it's amazing to me that when we get new members in, that continues to happen. So I think that's important. I'm excited about an increase in diversity. So thank you for appointing more diverse people. And I look forward to more of that in all the forms of diversity that it can be. Last year, we met 10 times. We had 10 public meetings. We do accept public comments. And we're talking about changing that up a little bit to, to include more time for them as we can hopefully do that. They've all been virtual and they've been recorded and available on a website. We've had trainings at most of our meetings. De-escalation has been a big one. Background checks, traffic stops. And we reviewed 16 cases. And I want to talk a little bit about how the cases are chosen for us to review. We get it from the auditor. They, they show the chairs. Well, they show everybody all the closed cases. So any board member can request to talk about a case, but usually it does fall in the chair. And one thing that I want to point out is one of our cases this past year happened in like 2019 and we didn't get to it till 2021. That was not our current auditors doing, but I wanted to point that out, that sometimes it takes longer. And also, on that note, I appreciate the ability of the Auditor's Office to be able to close more cases now that Rob and Lindsay are on staff. There was definitely a backlog of a lot of open cases. And sometimes we didn't have a whole lot to choose from because it was taking so long for them to get through them. So now that we have a full staff, we're seeing a lot of closed cases and a lot more diversity of what we can look at. We often do look at investigations that where the chain of command and the chief don't agree with the Auditor's Office. And I always find those to be interesting because it's good to kind of delve into why the Police Department looked at it one way. Well, the Auditor's Office looked at it a different way. And it's interesting to see what we can agree on and what we can't. Oh, and one thing that I would like to stress is the body cam policy that keeps coming up. I think in almost all of our, actually, yes, in every single one of our 16 cases, we either say we appreciate the use of body cams or we are disappointed in the use of body cams in, in the way that they mute. And we miss some, some important information, or they don't wear them, or they turn off somehow. So I know that they are looking at making it more succinct policy to having to have them on at all times. So I will say that the board is in complete support of that. And so when we look at a, when we look at a case, we get to see all of this stuff. It's pretty much everything that, that Auditor's Office gets to see. We don't get to see the
disciplinary.
Disciplinary action. That's the only thing we don't see. And the names are redacted. And we, as a board, don't say names. We use like Officer A, Officer B to protect their, their identities. But we do know who they are. So we are able to recuse ourselves if we have a relationship with them. And that has happened in the past.
I should, just to clarify, they get the full unredacted investigative file. And then in addition, we provide an investigative report that has the officers' names changed to Officer A and Officer B. And that's just to aid in discussion. So we don't violate public records law.
It's a lot easier throughout the case. We're looking at Officer A rather than a name because then it gets in our heads. Yeah. So when we see a case, we, we, when we discuss a case, we talk about kind of three different things. We talk about the intake and classification. We say whether or not we think that it was the right classification. We do see cases that are at that lower level, that, that flowchart. We see the lower level one time a year. We see kind of the ones that didn't get elevated to an actual allegation. So that's, I think that's really good because we get to see what, what it looks like when they maybe didn't violate the policy. And then we get to see the ones where they definitely did, or maybe they didn't. So we get to see if we agree with the intake and classification. And sometimes we don't agree. And sometimes we need clarification. And that comes from auditor or the IA Sergeant.
There you go.
All of the letters. It bothers me. And then we talk about policies and procedures. So this is where we talk a lot about the body cams and how we wish that the body cams were used more effectively and other things. Talk about training that we wish that the officers had, or we get to clarify, like, when was the last time this officer had a training on TASER use and that kind of thing, to just kind of ensure that they're up to date on the policies and trainings. And then we go around and we say who we agree with and what we agree with and, and how we agree or disagree. Then we get to kind of discuss it at the end. In addition to our work with the, with the CRB, we do appoint one person to be recommended to you all to also appoint to be a member of the Police Commission. So we, we elect somebody in our group and then you all approve them to be on both. We have Human Rights Commission. That's a liaison role. And then we had two members that we voted on to be on the ad hoc committee. And that was valuable to have them there because I know that they have a better sense of what our process is to share with them. And then we also got to hear from them about what was going on at those meetings. In closing, I would like to add some enthusiastic support for Leah to be moved from interim auditor to official auditor, if she would like it. We all appreciate and value the work that she's done before the extraordinary circumstances of the last two years, but also definitely during it. And also, we'd like to voice our support that Rob and Lindsay be moved from temporary employees to permanent because we are seeing firsthand the value of having a full staff and in their work. So.
I didn't know she was.
You could tell she didn't know. Thank you. This is what happens when you have a civilian advisory board. They, they say what they need to say. Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I know already that I have at least one counselor in the queue and a second counselor and a third. Everybody up there? Okay. So thank you. I think I'll okay. And a fourth. Okay, got it. Right. Thank you so very much. I won't take too much time because I know counselors have a lot of questions. But I just I so appreciate this report, both of these reports. And I think for those of us who are not in this work, week after week, to get this thorough insight into the nature of that work and how you look at that work is incredibly valuable and instructive to us. So I just want to thank you for, it's, I see that it's a massive amount of work to put this together. And, and then very much appreciating the Civilian Review Board and the work that you do and the serious nature of that work and how you take it seriously and do it thoroughly. So we are a better community because of all of the work you're doing. And Lindsay, great to see you in this new role. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, Beatrice and Leah. And welcome, Lindsay. It sounds like you've got, that was your, your leadoff hitter for your 360. Beatrice, thanks for the ringing endorsement. Yeah, I really appreciate the clarification in regards to the, the one termination. Yeah, I really appreciate the clarification in regards to the the one termination. That's the it it sounds like that was the one bad apple and there were nearly forty reasons that ultimately led to that that separation. So thank you for the clarification, Leah. On on page fourteen, allegations of misconduct. The 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 conduct term is is a little vague. And I'm wondering where, and I ask this because it's it's among the greatest concerns that have been shared with me from constituents in regards to interactions with law enforcement, either here in Eugene or countywide or or across the river in Springfield, dealing with a person who is suffering an acute mental health crises. The proper training, of course, helps not only save lives but prevents incarceration and distrust and 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 conversely generates goodwill when there's great training. I'm wondering where or if at all, your office runs across complaints concerning interactions with persons suffering an acute mental health crises and what bucket that might fall under.
Right.
I'll I'll pause there because I've got I've got a little little bit more.
Okay, yes, that that's definitely one of our a group of complaints that we receive. We have a mental health crisis in this in this area. And so for sure, that's something that officers are dealing with a lot. The answer as to which policy violation would be related to that is, it depends. Sorry. It's what we do is just to do a quick overview, like if that complaint were to come in, what I would do is I would order reports in video. I'd watch all of it. I'd go through what that person was complaining about. And then watch the video and see which policies I think may have been violated. So for instance, with conduct, there are several sub subsections of conduct and this is on the EPD website, but I can send it to you as well. But one of them would be failure to report misconduct. That would be misconduct, right? One would be failure to foster a safe work environment. One is expressions of prejudice or discrimination on duty. So those types of things, it's sort of, it's the, it's sort of the I'm trying to think of how to how to put it in a loose term, but it's something that an officer does and it just strikes you as wow, that was really unbecoming. So if they were to say something to that person in the mental health crisis, right, that was beyond discourtesy, but was actually prejudicial, that would be a conduct violation. Does that make sense?
And are you seeing a good swath of those in this this? When I see a conduct report, it's nearly fifty allegations of misconduct. That's in in what time period is that? And are you seeing, is it an outlier? Are you seeing more allegations of misconduct revolving around interactions with folks who might be suffering acute mental health crises?
So these allegations would all be from calendar year twenty twenty one. That's when we received them. I'd have to run some numbers. I would say anecdotally, I don't think that we experienced a higher rate of allegations of misconduct related to folks in mental health crisis last year than we did in any previous year that I've been here. But overall, I would say that in the twelve years I've been here, those are interactions that we follow or we we end up reviewing more and more frequently. And I think that's maybe not necessarily because of officer response to folks in mental health crisis as it is, there's a lot of folks in mental health crisis, especially over the last two years.
I agree. If I could just request then, I know I'm one of eight, but I I would like to see that parsed out in the future. I think that would be helpful informational piece. You mentioned that the auditor's office are looking for a new space. What what breakdown or do you have a a snapshot, even if it's just a gut snapshot of the complaints that come into your office? Are they mostly online? Are they telephonic? Are they in person?
It's a very good question. We break that down every year. So our office has been closed to walk-ins actually since the pandemic. So that used to be not a huge proportion of our intake, but it was, we would get some. It was, I would say, most of our walk-ins were folks who needed assistance, not necessarily from our office. But due to our working arrangements, thank you, Lindsay. Our most common method of intake is the telephone. Fifty-two percent of our complaints come over the phone. We also do get them online. We get them both email and through. We have an online complaint form that's a little bit It's definitely been there since I started. It's, you know, it's 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 a web form. And some people use it, but I think it's been, we tend to follow up a lot with those folks because it does, they usually have other things that they want to submit. So yes, typically they come in over the phone, but we are looking forward to having at least walk-in hours again soon. Or we might not go back to full-time walk-in availability.
Helpful, thank you. You mentioned that Springfield PD is not subject to our civilian review board unless they're or how did you frame it? You said unless they're acting under the direction of EPD supervisors. Could we expand on that?
I I think, okay, that's what that's what I get for writing emails on the weekend. So we do not have jurisdiction over Springfield police officers' actions. We do have jurisdiction over the EPD supervisors. So if an EPD supervisor directs a Springfield officer to do something and when the direction is not within policy, I can most certainly investigate that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that that I appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, so it's it's EPD folks I will have jurisdiction over. And actually, in the community impact case from a couple of years ago, one of our complaints that came in, we ended up really going through all of the hours of video and identifying that the involved person was a Springfield police department employee, not Eugene. So we advised them of our investigation and let them take it from there.
But the buck would stop with the EPD supervisor.
If it depends. So if an EPD supervisor is giving lawful directions to their their folks and a Springfield police employee for hypothetically were to do something that would be outside of EPD policy, we don't have jurisdiction over that. It's if that EP supervisor hypothetically were to give an order that would be against EPD policy, then that would be, does that make sense? Okay.
Somewhat concerning. Thank you. I might want to take a second round, Mayor. This is fascinating. Thank you.
Okay, Randy and then Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation and the packet. Sat down with this over the weekend. Pad of paper in hand. I was expecting to have him a bunch of questions and I thought you answered pretty much. Every time I get to a question, it would be answered. So
Thank you.
I appreciate how thorough you were. With that said, do you have a sense for how our police department stacks up in the state, the nation? And the reason I ask that is it feels like we're frequently tied to national events that don't happen here. And my sense, having worked with police myself, is it's a pretty professional organization. And I just wanted to get some of your thought and also your thoughts, how our oversight system stacks up with other agencies that have oversight.
I think Eugene Police Department is very much ahead of the ball nationally. And I think our oversight system is as well. So I I recently went to a conference of major city chiefs as the oversight person there. I'm not always the most popular person, but that's fine. But these it has gotten a lot different over the years. Honestly, like it's it's interesting to me to see like when Mark and I would go to this, you know, five or six years ago and was sort of no one would talk to us. But everybody understands that oversight is is sticking with us, right? Oversight helps lend legitimacy, it helps build public trust. And I think a lot of police departments are understanding that this trust is not something they can build on their own, right? So that said, I really appreciate working with Chief Skinner. I think he and I are on the same page about a lot of things and I am extraordinarily lucky to work with someone like that. And I think EPD overall is definitely focused on the right things. I think my job is to help them get there.
Great, thank you. And I guess this is more for the manager and maybe the chief. If we did run body cameras all the time when an officer was on duty, and I know you can't answer this right now, what what would that look like as far as the support that would be needed for that to happen? Ie, capacity for storage of data. I don't know what else would be involved, but that's, I'm assuming that's more for police department and IT. But that's something I would be interested in knowing the difference between how we do it now and what that would produce so that we don't have times when the cameras are not functioning. I think a good system like that seems like it protects everybody involved. And I think behaviors on all sides are probably better when you're on tape.
And I I actually, I felt like that policy is one that is already in process. So we can get that information for you, but
Oh, well, if it's already being worked on, that's 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 good.
To clarify just quickly, the Chief Skinner has got a draft where it would just, it would really limit the ability of officers to mute their cameras. So that's that's the one that we've been talking about and there, so it's not necessarily having the cameras on more. So we're creating that extra storage requirement. It's more keeping them recording audio more often. So the flip side of that is having someone to deal with the public record side of things. So you can redact that when it when it does get released.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I I didn't, I thought it was just off at times. Another thing I'm I'm interested in that kind of strays from this a little bit, you know, Washington County, I believe it is, has a program where they have a specially trained police officer that's paired up with a specially trained mental health professional, getting at some of the the things that Counselor Keating was talking about with mental health. Have we looked into a a program like that?
I don't know specific, I don't know specifically what programs we've looked at, but I think that that model is essentially following kind of our lead in cahoots. So it's a little bit, and I think Denver's doing something similar. It's a little bit adjacent to what we do with cahoots. So I I would have to just check if we've we're, I mean, I will remind you that we are in the middle or at the beginning of our alternative response study where we're going to be looking at a lot of different models and what I've learned from the consultant. Sorry, I'm taking, I feel like I'm taking your time, but I've learned from the consultant that they've been engaged with a number of communities around the state and we've kind of agreed to be part of a sharing of information. So if there's a best practice someplace else that's working, we're going to get that and they're going to get our information as well.
I I would like to see us widen out our our look at at the systems because there are some systems like that one particularly. I think it has some advantages that we don't get with cahoots, really. And then the last thing is more of a comment. Having hired a lot of people myself, no matter how robust your hiring process is, every once in a while, a bad apple slips through the net. And that's just the reality. Then it's how do we address that? And that's where I think police oversight and our police supervisors and rank and file officers, not being afraid to speak up is really important. The credibility of the system and maintaining a safe and effective police force in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Claire and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. So so nice to have you both here, all all three of you, but thanks for the reports. Thanks. Yes, I agree with the mayor and Randy, like the the documentation you provided us is excellent. And I just want to say, I I can't say enough about how impressive it is, Leah, that you and your small staff accomplished so much during such a difficult time last year. So kudos on that and congratulations on your recent hires. I do love that new graph that Lindsay created, apparently. I think that's great. It really helps break things down. I noted that you say you were able to close cases with an average of forty-two days, which in my mind is pretty great considering the complexity of your process. And I realize that's an average, so there's going to be some that that take longer, but it still seems to me something to be proud of as an accomplishment. I appreciate that you're making an investment in diversity, equity and inclusion by by having a position dedicated to that. And I think that idea of an audit of your process and how the public interacts as a first step seems like the right way to get started. I am excited about the prospect of having a new space. I really hope it helps the efficiency and workflow of your office. And I know your current space, even while it was closed, was vandalized several times, apparently because the sign contains the word police. Even though you oversee the police. Or not the police. And then on the civilian review board report, I really appreciated that you pointed out how this board works together and that this is a space where our community can come together, discuss and debate challenging issues in a constructive way that is so important right now that you guys are demonstrating the the kind of the power of democracy and and how we work together as a community to grapple with things that can be really challenging. And I feel like your committee is one of our unsung accomplishments of our oversight system. Having this dedicated group of volunteers scrutinizing the work of the police auditor is so important to ensure that this office is really connecting with the community and doing what we expect it to be doing. So thanks so much for your service and to everyone else who serves. Lastly, I appreciate the rec or not lastly, but I appreciate the recommendation that your board made about our police department being cautious about when deciding to reach out to other agencies because those agencies are not subject to oversight. And just very quickly, you know, the the reporting on the incident at the Dove Medical Clinic where they brought in other agencies and apparently there was a use of force by a Springfield officer. And I don't know if that's within our policy, but it kind of made me go, oh, shoot. I do have more to say, so I'll take a second round. Thanks.
All right, Alan and then Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the police auditor's office, all of you and and the CRB, new and old members. I I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done, but also the usual thorough police auditor and CRB reports. There's just a ton of work that goes into those and they're all, they're very informative. And they're very important pieces to document all the stuff that's been going on. I just wanted to say good job over the last year, both the police auditors and the CRB work work exactly as they're intended to do. I don't have any significant issues about how you do your work or the or your outcomes that you come up with. So I I think the police auditor and the CRB work really well. I'm glad you're past your staffing issues. Congratulations on getting through that. Because of the public meetings law, I understand we don't get any names of officers, but there are there is follow-up and there is discipline that that we get to see the outcomes of of who what happens. And and I read through all of the appendix A, which is the allegations of misconduct and criminal behavior. And eleven pages, thirty-five complaints. All but one of them had alignment between the EPD chain of command, the auditor and the chief. Which I think is kind of remarkable. You all agreed on the adjudication except for one case. And I think that's important, I think. But it's also important to think about that in the context of it, of the the totality of what the police do. And one of by that, I mean, there were nineteen employees that sustained allegations of discipline. Out of how many officers are there?
I believe there's about a hundred and sixty sworn. So, yeah.
Yeah, and and those range of different kinds of of discipline and and level that. But three hundred and thirty-nine complaints out of how many public contacts did the police have a year?
Many, many tens of thousands, I think.
Tens of thousands. Yeah, if we could get that number from EPD, I think that would be interesting and and kind of track that along with just the number of complaints. But I think it's kind of that ratio that's also important. How many public contacts are and how many resultant complaints? But overall, I I, the only question I had was really around the muting of body cams and and I I'm not sure I quite understood what the city manager and what everybody was saying about what's the happening with that policy. Could you go a little bit more elaborate, a little bit more on that, please?
Yeah, I can. And actually, if you have one more question, I can look up and dig in and do a little bit more research while while they answer that.
I I don't have another question, but I I know a couple of jokes I could
No, it's okay. And normally, I wouldn't know all this anyway, except that we've been really diving into this with the ad hoc recommendations because this was in there too. So currently, I believe that the current policy, and I don't know the details of it, but there is some allowance for muting the body cam. And I think they do that when they're sometimes interacting with victims. Or there's different reasons why they would. And so I know that through this work, one of the recommendations was that not be allowed. And there is a, I know there's a draft policy that really limits the times at which they would be able to do that. And that will work its way through the Police Commission. I believe it's going through Police Commission.
I think it will go through Police Commission, but it also needs to, it's a change in working conditions. Thank you. So there's also a EPA bargaining issue.
Yeah, but it is currently in process.
Yes, chief was quick to Yes. Chief was quick to draft a new, I, I, we've talked about this a lot, this muting issue. Does that help?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. I know it was one of the ad hoc committees. I mean, there are a lot of things that the ad hoc committee, um, recommended that we already have or in process of doing or already did. So we need to bring that out a little bit more and have more clarity about that point as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Greg and then Mike and then Jennifer.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I think you guys do fantastic work. And we have one of the best systems in the country. We have belts and suspenders. We have a police commission that oversees police policies. Uh, we have the CRB, which provides additional civilian review. And then we have the auditor's office, which came about in the nineties, uh, because of a specific case of, uh, police misconducts towards, uh, female citizens. And, um, the fact that we did not have a process in place to deal with, um, those, um, violations, um, was the motivation for us, uh, developing the system that we have. Now, um, a couple of questions that, uh, have bothered me for quite some time. And that is, is that, uh, we often talk about, uh, the Springfield Police Department, but we don't talk about the U of, University of Oregon's Police Department. And, um, the fact that they operate within the, uh, city limits. They used to be a Department of Public Safety. Now they're a police department. They carry guns. Uh, they can make arrests. They can do everything any other police officer does in the state. Uh, but they're not su- subject to the same level of review that, um, you know, Eugene police officers are subject to. So, um, can you talk a little bit about, uh, what knowledge you have of what system of review the U of O has in place? And if there are any conversations about, um, the University of Oregon, uh, adopting a review system or at least working with the city to review the, uh, actions of their, uh, police officers?
I can try, yes. Uh, so I know when they plan, when they were changing to a police department, uh, they reached out, I believe they reached out to Mark at the time. He and I definitely had a lot of conversations around what oversight of UOPD would look like. And ultimately we are not affiliated with, with what, with what they do. So I'm, I believe they have something with the student.
Something administrative.
Administrative. They have some kind of, in their administrative review, it's within the university and it is definitely not, um, my understanding is that it's not as robust as what we have. But I'm honestly not very clear on what that is. I could do some research and get back to you, but I don't want to speak to it in an uninformed manner, which I can hear myself doing.
Yeah, I'm interested to find out that if there are allegations of misconduct against an officer from the university versus a Eugene city officer, uh, what happens? And my concern is the unevenness of the, uh, oversight, uh, within our city limits. Um, you know, because of the, uh, independence, so to speak, of the university. The, you know, uh, second thing is with, as far as, uh, I really applaud you in terms of, uh, going out to hire a DEI officer, um, and, and, and someone to examine that. Can you talk a little bit more about, um, how we can effectively measure the level of trust? And the ability for our citizens to feel comfortable in reaching out to your office?
That is a really good question. I'm.
Does that get it from communities of color and, uh, the LGBTQ committee on, community on a regular basis?
Well, and that's actually something we've been talking about, even with just the relocation of our office, right? As how many folks are uncomfortable being seen going into the auditor's office? Um, so we, we find neutral locations to meet up with folks and so they don't, so they're not seen coming in. And so I think there is, it's twofold, right? Like it's trust of our office, but it's also trust that they won't be retaliated against by EPD. Um, and so those are conversations I've had so many times over the last, you know, twelve years that I've been here with folks who come in and I talk to them about rarity of retaliation complaints and, and all the systems we have in place to protect against that. And still, there is, you know, a systemic, uh, distrust and a systemic fear, sometimes based on national things, but based on history and based on a lot of reasons that the face-to-face interactions can help, um, but it's, it's a long road. So I'm excited to have a social scientist on staff now who can help me with figuring out metrics for measuring success of, for instance, of whatever DEI programs we come up with, whatever changes we make to be a more inclusive and more, uh, build that trust with the community. At the moment, I don't have those metrics set up, but I'd love to talk to you more if you have ideas. Cause I would very much like to have, I want to be able to measure that in a demonstrable way.
I'm probably going to need a second round, running out of time, but I, I, I think assessment in this area is critical.
I agree. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mike and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leah, and all of your staff for both the, the work that you do and for the report today. Matt brought up an interesting point, and I too have, uh, uh, an interest in the more specific interaction of those with mental health issues in our police department. And I, I think he, he mentioned forty or fifty complaints that were listed this last year. Did, I don't have that in front of me. I apologize. Can you refresh my memory on that?
Sure. Those were the complaints that, uh, included allegations of unbecoming conduct. So those weren't necessarily mental health related calls or mental health related complaints, but they were complaints that ended up with one, at least one specific allegation of unbecoming conduct.
And can you remind me how many of those were sustained?
Yes. Sort of. I can say that over sixty specific allegations were sustained. I don't have it broken it down into how many conduct allegations were sustained.
That's what I was looking for.
Sure. I can actually run that for you and I can get those numbers to you. I just do not have them in the report. The one thing I didn't do.
I'm sorry. Well, I like Alan digging into the numbers here too. That, that's important because I, I was, I was under the assumption that that number would probably be as low expressed as a percentage as the, the few sustained complaints out of the larger number of complete number. Um, do you, is it, would it be your recollection to think that's probably likely that it would be a low number in that way as well? A low percentage of them?
I will just. Because of sort of, we had some two, we had some strange cases last year. So I would say typically, yes, that would be a different, that would be a low sustained rate. I'm not sure that that's the case last year. And I will say that one reason why we do not have the percentage sustained rate in this year's report is because we still do have so many specific allegations open. Um, we don't want to report something that's misleading. It could change substantially. So.
Well, and I want to bring it up too, because it's one thing to complain, but it's another thing for this, for you, for those who look at the cases to agree and say, yeah, that was probably not the right behavior.
Yeah. And I do think our sustain rate in general has gone up over the years as our preliminary investigative process has become more thorough. Specifically with body worn camera and in-car video, because we have access to so many things on the front end, we can really do a better job of accurately classifying. So we don't end up doing the whole investigative process on something that's, that's didn't happen.
Well, and that's kind of the, I wanted to bring out some more that the, the chief is the one who finally gets to say whether a complaint is sustained or not, within policy or not. Am I correct on that?
Yes. Yeah.
And you mentioned that you, you, the great working relationship you have, and I'm very thankful for that as well. Now I'm going to ask you a harder question. I do that sometimes. You mentioned a couple of places where you disagree and that's going to happen. Would you say that you disagree more frequently or less frequently with the chief than Mark did?
Ooh, that's an interesting question. Um, I imagine it's around the same. Partially because Mark trained me for so many years. But I'm not, I'd be interested to hear what the chief's answer is to that, honestly. So I think he's on my review. But no, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I think he and I recently had sort of a, a discussion about what's with, what's, uh, unfounded or within policy and what's the difference there. So it's sort of a low grade discussion, but, um, I think overall it would probably be around the same as with, as Mark. I'm not sure though.
And the increase in sustains that you mentioned, there may be a small increase in sustain over the last couple of years. Would you care to characterize that other than what you said? Any, or add to that characterization any more than the intake process has gotten better?
I, I've thought about that. You know, I've thought about whether I'm, we had, you know, we had more cases classified as allegations of misconduct last year than the year before. And I was like, oh, is this, is this me? Am I an activist auditor? Kind of trying to have that self-reflection of, of what I'm doing and, um, and I don't think so. Uh, I, you know, I think I've been honestly doing this for so long. Not alone, you know, with Mark. And so I feel like that's really the point of view I've brought to it. Not that I'm an extension of him, but definitely I, I have his voice in there a lot of the time. So, um, so I don't think so. I mean, I honestly do think that our preliminary investigative process is just so much better than it, than it was, especially twelve years ago. But even when body worn cameras first started being used, it's just, it's extraordinarily helpful to have those.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer and then Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so first I love Greg's built and suspenders. Uh, I like that a lot. And, and, and I think it, it does speak well to our, our system. And yet at the same time, I don't know what we want, if you're adding a bow tie or what, but you're still adding to the program and, and, um, making it better all the time. And I really appreciate that. And your goals, it's, if all fits on one slide, but as I read through it, it seems very ambitious to me. So I'm really thankful that you got some good staff because I'm, I don't think this would be possible without that. So I, I really want to thank you for how you just don't sit back and like good enough, right? You're always looking to be better and, and that's, that's really fantastic. I do have a, a concern, you know, Al, um, Alan was asking about having some kind of chart that showed the number of complaints based on the number of community contacts. And I think sometimes data can be a little misleading because one really bad interaction, can have a lot, larger effect than it sounds like. So I, I want to be careful when we put information out that we're not, I don't feel like it's your job to create trust for the police. Like you have a very specific job and you do it very well. And I would hate to have data that went out, make it look like you were trying to create a certain narrative.
Right.
That you're, when you're just trying to present data that is useful for people so that they can understand what's going on. So that was my only comment about that. And while the CRB is here, or their representative anyway, I really want to thank you. Your job is, I, I don't do it, obviously. I imagine it is very difficult to do. And some of the things you have to talk about and think about and really internalize, it's probably hard to forget in some cases. And I really want to express how thankful our community is for the work that you guys do for the rest of us so that, that we can choose to go to those meetings if we want to or know someone's there doing that work for us. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Emily.
Thank you. Thank you for a very amazing report, quite extensive. Thought it was very interesting to read about just what kinds of things people complain about. And, um, runs the gamut of many, many things, gives me some insight as to more of what the police are really doing, as well as what you have, the which things you have to check up on. All the stuff that have no problems, like I said, don't know about that. And I'm really glad you've got more employees. I'm waiting for mine to show up. My favorite part of this and to the CRB is that you included the minutes.
Good.
Certainly made it longer, but and they were at the end. I liked it the best, so they should have been sooner. It was, it was fascinating to see how the conversation went. And it gave a lot more insight than the, the police auditor part where it listed the facts. So, um, it made it more real. I really, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I have four counselors who've asked for a second round. We do have a potential executive session, so I'm just going to sort of watch the time and ask you to watch the time a little bit and we'll see how it goes. So, um, Matt, then Claire, then Greg, then Alan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Then I'll limit it to just one question. Since this, the, 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 the civilian review board and the police auditor system has been established, in that time, we now all have, we all carry phones with us, recording devices. There have been, uh, massive political unrest and social movements in the streets. How has the charge of the office changed, your respective offices? I know you weren't necessarily there in the roles you're in right now, but in your time, how have you seen those roles change for the better? And how have they changed for the worse?
I feel like I could write an essay on this, so I'll, I'll try to, to be, uh, more brief than that. But I think our mission, you know, our, our mission hasn't changed. And our mission is still to watch the watchers, right? We're, we're watching the police to make sure that they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. However, our, the way that we do our jobs have changed significantly. So as you mentioned, the cameras and the communication and social media and all of these things. It is interesting to me, you know, when I started, we would get all of our complaints, you know, through the phone or walk-ins or as we were talking about earlier, right? Now, someone may never contact us, but Beatrice is out there on Facebook with our Facebook page, interacting with folks, and she will often find things and say, hey, we need to look at this. Like this is causing, this is getting a lot of traction or this is getting a lot of attention. And so the way that, and that would be an auditor initiated complaint, right? The way that our system works. So for instance, you know, that's what we're going to do about last weekend. We're taking a look at how that all went and, and I can get back to you with how that goes. But so it's, it's sort of, we need to be more places to make sure that we're hearing about complaints that don't come to us, um, if that makes sense. And then I think also we have a greater responsibility as more communities turn to community oversight as a way to, to establish community trust, um, not just in police, but in the government, you know, and the people who are supposed to be helping them and taking care of them. I think we have a responsibility to be, to be responsive and open to those folks, right? Like we need to, the people who do come to us, I feel like, I just feel an immense responsibility to make sure that they feel that we have listened to them and we have heard them. And even if we don't find a substantiated complaint after, after what they've told us, that they feel that they were heard and they feel that they were helped. Because that's what we're here to do. Um, I, I feel like I could go on a lot, but I hope that I answers a little bit for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Claire and then Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one little thing to add, which was I appreciated the shout out, uh, for Leah to be hired as the permanent police auditor. We duly noted, uh, and as far as her staff status, um, I, that's not up to us. Uh, that, that would be up to Leah, I believe. But it's obvious to me that those positions, uh, are incredibly important to supporting the work of, that Leah is doing and.
Just seeing this now.
I noticed that, um, so as council president, I supervise Leah and we meet regularly. And since her staff has been on board, she has looked a lot less exhausted on the Zoom meetings. Uh, and then lastly, I'll say, uh, sometimes the city manager won't be at the table when the police auditor is here because she, she doesn't, she's not the boss of you, right? But I'm really glad she stayed, uh, because the city manager was able to address some, you know, ancillary related things. Uh, so a good thing for us to note for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Greg and then Alan.
Yeah, real quick, how many complaints about the actions of other agencies in our jurisdiction do you receive?
That is a very good question. So we had fifty complaints dismissed and I'm not sure how many of those specifically were out of our. out of our jurisdiction, but I can run those numbers for you and get them to you.
Okay. And then Mayor, uh, can I request that you, um, in your capacity as leader of our city, uh, request a report from the U of O's, uh, police agency uh, to city council, uh, because I think it's important. And, uh, our, uh, police department has recently had to respond to several incidents over at that area of town. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I would, I, I would like to know, um, you know, what their thoughts are about oversight and supervision, um, within this jurisdiction.
Yes, you may request. Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Uh, Alan, wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, it's on that last point. Um, I've asked several times, being that the university's in, in my ward, uh, about whether or not the U of O would entertain uh, a oversight system like ours, and they've declined to do that. Um, and gone off in a different direction. So that, that's been an ongoing dialogue we've had with them since they were, became a public, public safety department, much less police department. I also wanted to, uh, comment on something. Uh, I said, it's not just sworn officers that actually take complaints or respond to service calls. There's, you know, beside the two hundred or so officers, there's another hundred and fifty people that, uh, take service responses. And, uh, for about three hundred and fifty people that respond to the public. So, uh, I, it's a quite a large group. And then finally, I just want to reiterate something that, um, Greg said earlier, which was that we have one of the best systems in the country. People actually come here to figure out how it's done and watch our police auditor and our CRB and our police depart, and our police commission work and how it gets done. Uh, we start where many communities are just dreaming of trying to get to with our police auditor and the CRB and, and the police commission in that whole oversight system that we have. And I think it's, um, a lot of work has gone into getting us here and, and, and it's, and it's quite remarkable where uh, what we've been able to do in, in, in Eugene in, in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, this was a wonderful report and clearly counselors are interested in, and very grateful to all of the work you've done. And I will echo those thoughts without extending this meeting. Oh, Greg has one more comment.
Last thing, I appreciate the fact that we're down on HBO. We're not Baltimore.
No, we're not, for sure. Oh, man, now I'm gonna watch that show.
Right. So thank you very, very much. Excellent session, wonderful questions and, um, and, uh, and I will just echo one comment, which is, it is extraordinary what you were able to accomplish in a very, very difficult year without enough staff and just, and layers of demands placed on you. So it is a credit to your leadership, to the team you've put together, or credit to the CRB for all the work you've done. And a credit to you that you've hired wonderful new staff to put you in a, in a better position. So thank you for all of that work and this report. And, uh, with that, I think we'll close out this section, session of the meeting. And I'm just gonna look to the city manager. We have fifteen minutes. Is it enough?
I can just give you a quick update in fifteen minutes, but the problem is counselors are gonna need to log off.
We have to log on to a different link.
Yes.
So we'll see how far we get.
Okay. So, uh, Greg and Mike, I'm gonna, uh, now move into executive session and you all have a different link. So you can log off the link that you're currently using and you should have a Zoom link. And I'll make my way through my text here. Eugene City Council will now meet in executive se-